I call the meeting to order seven PM. And the first thing we'll do is we'll call, we have Ron Masters, Gil Hayes, Nick McSana, John Madigan, Bill Lowe's, and Cal Myers, present from the Commission. We have Jerry Bancroft, Tom Arce, Fire Department, and a special guest, Jason Baudrillard.
Deputy Chief Bancroft is also on Zoom.
Thank you.
Are there others on Zoom? Because I didn't do my last.
Andy? And the Secretary of Tech. And there, yeah, there are some other, Anne, I'm not sure who Anne is, and Marie Assusa.
I need to see the other members that are there. We have the first order of business, we have to approve the minutes from December 14th.
I think a motion is always going to be approved. Second, I motion.
You got a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded to approve December 14th minutes. All in favor?
All right.
Jay, who is your second, please? Thank you.
Okay, the next order of business, we, is the January 11th meeting. And there is one change that Nick brought to my attention. Okay, Peggy, it's on page eight, third paragraph downward states Chairman Madigan requested that Vice Chairman McSana provide a job description. That should be the Fire Department.
Okay.
What?
Thank you. That should be Jerry. This should be Jim Bancroft?
That should be the Broadbrook Fire Department.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion on that? A motion to approve the minutes as amended? As amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? All right. All right, approved. As amended. Okay, at this time, we'll ask for any public participation. Jerry, now move on to the next item.
Wait, just give him a second. Anne, did you have anything to say, or you just wanted to test your audio? Okay. I guess we're all set, Chief.
Okay, the next order of business, report from Chief Bartieri, Fire Report.
Okay, we'll do the month of December first. Month of December, we had six fire calls, actual fire calls, was one building fire, one passenger car fire, brush fire, campfire, and outside fire. We had 45 medical slash car accidents, five hazardous conditions, gas leaks, those are gas leak, carbon oxides, cable phone lines down, five service calls, those were pretty much water problems, six good intent calls, those are mostly, we had seven in route calls, wrong location. And we had seven, we had 11 false alarms for the month of December. I can give you the whole year if you want, real quick, what we had last year. All right, for fires, there was 51 fires, 13 of which were building fires, three of them were cooking fires, one chimney fire, seven brush fires, five car fires, three wood chip pile fires, rescue emergency medical services, we had 411 of those calls, which 240 of them were medical calls, 97 were assist the medical, the ambulance, 10 were EMS, rescue EMS calls, and 14 were vehicle accidents with no injuries, and 35 vehicle accidents with injuries. We had 64 hazardous condition calls, which are 10 natural gas, 25 power lines down, combustible liquid spills. Pretty much for those, service calls, it's 67, 23 were smoke order removal, nine unauthorized burning, seven cover assignments, which cover assignments are out of our town, nine unauthorized burns, six lockouts, three people in distress. We had 75 good intent calls, 66 were dispatched in route. And we had false alarm, 99 false alarms, which both of them were smoke detector activations and unintentional transmissions of alarm. A total of 768 calls last year.
All right, any questions for Chief Bartieri?
Those, those numbers are found, if the public ever wanted to find them, those are kept on the Fire Department's website and update for your regular, too, right?
Yeah.
Just as a good hint for people to know.
Okay, thank you, Chief Bartieri. The next order of business was reports from the Fire Marshal. I had asked him to come here tonight, and he said he was going, but I figured.
He had the fire problem.
He had that fire.
Yeah.
So hopefully he'll show up, so we'll table that for now, and hopefully he'll show up later. And he can report to us then. Okay, the next order of business is the budget presentation. We spent considerable time on this last month, and I had some questions concerning, Tom, why don't you give us a rundown of what you found? You made some changes, I know that.
Okay, you guys asked for some different variations between a career, a full-time career, adding a fourth, fourth guy, and the fourth guy with seven nights, and the fourth guy with five nights. We have this pretty much broken down. The option one is to, is one full-time firefighter. Keep it 40 hours a week, $18, he would be at $58,000 a year, 45-hour work week. The three-day staff would stay at $18 an hour, they work 40 hours, and you would have two part-time night shifts for eight hours each.
Actually, that would be a 45-hour work week for the, for a full-timer.
For a full-timer, yes, I'm sorry, $58,000. That would bring the budget up to 842,530, no, excuse me, bring up to 943,25. It's a total increase of 97,795. Option two is one full-time firefighter to be posed along with three part-time day staffs, $18 an hour, 40 hours a week, two part-times night staff, $18 an hour. And that full-timer would work 50 hours a week. And that's based on $25 an hour, $65,000 a year, plus, you know, all those benefits. And that would be an increase in the budget, $105,523. The total budget is 948,053. And option three, we have 3A and 3B. 3A is one additional, one additional part-time firefighter, which you would not be a career firefighter. It would just add to the, the other daytime. Bring four guys per day, working eight hours a day, two part-time firefighters, either five or seven nights a week. If they were going to go five nights a week, it'd be $19 an hour. And four, excuse me, four during the day, five at night. We'd bring your budget up to 894, 893, 36. And then 3B is pretty much the same thing, other than you're going to add two more nights per week, you would seven nights a week. And that would bring you up to 398, 3995.
932, 37.
For the year. Yeah, 932, 37 for the year.
So basically, what we try to do is give you an option of five nights a week with the two part-time staff and the four guys during the day. Keeping it either eight-hour days or nine-hour days, which is on the next sheet.
The next sheet, the same thing, it's the, it's 3A and B, just add one more hour for the day shift.
For the day shift, yeah. Yes, sir.
Just on, on how broken down this is, first of all, thank you very much, this is certainly helpful. But I gave it some thought, and I guess at the end of the day, it's the Commission's responsibility to approve the proposed budget. How far down the rabbit hole we go into how you spend every last penny of those dollars, whether you have four guys on, three guys on, whether you pay them $19, $20 an hour, whatever it is, it's good to have an understanding, but I would say that it's our responsibility to pass the budget with a line item for personnel and salary, and you manage that salary as you see fit to provide the fire protection services. So I don't know that we have to say that we're approving four guys, three guys, two guys, one guys, whatever it is, we're going to approve a line item for the personnel. So at the end of the day, with all these things, what number do you think would be most reasonable? And I like, I mean, just thinking about it, like 3B seems pretty good, but I don't know if that's where you guys sit, you know, that's right in between. And the reason I say that is, when I look at the flexibility that that provides you, you have enough money in that budget to then, if you do decide you want to go to three guys, one of them being full-time, you could convert to that, if you found that there was a supervisor problem or whatnot. So there's nothing that says you have to, you're bound by any of these, you're given the money to manage the personnel to provide fire protection services. Does that make sense to the other Commissioners?
The way they have laid this on, I think it's kind of academic, and you need to see this, lay it out the way it is. And I do agree that it's the Commission's responsibility to try and provide the funds, to try and manage too much.
I guess any caveat I have to that is in line with our understanding of how well fire protection services are being provided or not. And if they're, and they're being provided extremely well, just based on the chief's report. But at some future point in time, 10 years from now, this could be a discussion point to say, okay, we're having an issue, maybe you don't have enough money in the personnel budget, or maybe you don't have enough money in the equipment budget, you know, it should be, I think, that level of discussion for us. So I'm comfortable if you, if you make a recommendation for one of these options, that we can use that as a basis of discussion to approve that line item to the budget.
Are you, Tom, and Jay, ready to propose which one you refer?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe like 4B.
Yeah, I mean, 3B, 4B, it doesn't matter. I think the B option, either one, is the way to go. The personal opinion on me is if you extended it an hour, we could do two people starting at seven and going for nine hours, and there would be an eight-hour overlap in the day versus what's going on today, is there's only six hours of overlap of three personnel. They come on one at a time, they gradually drop off one at a time. Just increase coverage, but either one of those options is, is fine with me. And the reason why it's so detailed is just, you know, and not, not so you guys can pick which one you want necessarily, but just to show you what you're getting for the cost, basically.
Absolutely important. I just wanted to be on the record that you're not bound to say you have, I don't think it's the Commission's point of view to say you have to follow that prescriptively. This is helpful to understand where the money would go.
Yep.
But if you need to reuse it, so if you wanted to go six months from now, from, say you approve option 4B, it gets approved, and you find that that's not working out, you have the money in the budget then to go and convert to option one and use the money to hire a full-time person going to three. You have that freedom of maneuver.
Understood. Well, I'm going to either one. Either 3B or 4B, whatever.
Okay, well, if you put 4B in, and, and did you have any other changes?
Yes, I do. I would, if, if, I would like to add $5,000 into the incentive program.
And why, why would you do that?
Because the way the state law reads, right now, my, my incentive budget is right at 50% for the year, I still got two more quarters to go. With the way the state law reads, whoever works for the, let's say, the town or the Commission during the week, like Jerry does, or Jimmy, or Vinnie, or my night staff, I have to pay them the same hourly rate if they come back for a call. First state law. So the normal fire, like myself, I get $12 a call to come down here. Now, if Jerry comes down, like, tonight for a call, he's getting $18 an hour. So there's, there's quite a bit of a fluctuation in the pay, and I have quite a few guys that make a ton of calls, you know, and they, and they're putting this toll on them.
Would the $5,000 cover that?
I think so. You know, it's, it's, it's hard to say, it's, but I had put it for last year, too. Through the town's budget, they shot it out, they cut it out.
Phil Hayes, what are you asking for the incentive program right now?
120, I want to push up to 125.
Yeah.
Yeah, 120 for a couple of years.
Yeah, this year we're right at 50%.
As it stands right now.
One other question. If, all these proposals are great, but if, if we don't pass the budget, you go the same process as the town, chop and stuff down?
Yes.
So if you're asking the 4B, then we're on a top to chop. But not for that reason. That's a little old budgeting, but still.
I think Commissioner Hayes is, is spot on, that we put the budget together that's reasonable for the taxpayers, and if they say they don't approve it, you have room to say, okay, we don't want to cut anything, but now if you have to, you can look at options that are not, not desirable, but you could still maybe get by. Again, I think, based on the number of calls that the area, you know, holds, and the number of calls that are being drawn to, the requirement to keep volunteers, in, to keep volunteers incentivized, you know, I think that makes sense, Tom, to add money to that, to keep people wanting to come down here and being a part of it is important.
That's why we got the, that's why we got the night shift, trying to make up the volunteers, to keep them all involved in the whole, they don't feel segregated from the, from the paid staff during the day to the volunteers at night, everybody's kind of on the same page, you know, they're all, they all treated the same, they all feel the same. So that's, that's our philosophy behind that.
Okay, so I have one question. Tom?
Yes, sir.
In the original proposal
Yes, sir.
My understanding was the original proposal had an increase in night and day coverage already?
Correct. Five. Right, that was for three additional nights.
And that was for three additional nights?
Yes.
To make it a total of five.
Five nights total.
But this new proposal actually gives them a dollar raise as well. That was the proposal and the proposed budget that we did at the beginning of the month, with this figure of $18 an hour, not the 19, that I believe you'll.
Because it's not in court at 19, you're hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think 4B is the good one.
The total budget then would be 957, 327.
Yeah.
Yeah, five, that's all. Was that the only additions there, Chief?
Yeah, and the 5,000 for the, that's it, yep, that's all I got.
One more question?
Yes, sir.
And then, would that change, if you increase that, would that change your line item with the 27th week?
No, we figured that in, we, well, we figured, it's all figured in. We figured the payroll taxes, and we figured the 27th week, we figured payroll taxes, and I gather, from what I understand, there's no workman's comp difference. That'll stay the same as it is now at, I think it's 20, something thousand.
25, I think.
25. Yeah, we figured it's, yeah, if you go to 4B and chose the payroll taxes are $7,400, that would be the, the increase. You have to add that to the, to the current payroll taxes now. So payroll taxes now are at 25,000, so it would be 32, 32,000. The 27th week, you'd have to add 7,000, so you have another, it's like, $4,000, $11,000. What we did, this is, what we, what we wrote down here was the difference, what the addition would be to the.
Addition to what was proposed, or those figures.
Addition to what's proposed.
Right. Add those numbers was proposed, and the budget you have, that's where, that's where those numbers.
So the 27th, just to make it clear, your 27th payroll would go from 7,200 to an additional 3,896?
Correct, right. So it'd be 11,000, a little over 11,000.
The impact would be, again, that's the proposed mill rate, would be 2.43?
Yep, yeah. Which is actually, we did some rough math, and if, if our numbers are correct, based on what should probably be backed out of the town side, the, the mill rate on the town side should go down roughly 1.3, 1.4 mills, so it's really only an increase of 1.3 on, on our side, in addition to what they are and you know, there's some numbers there, you know, it ranges anywhere between $3.25 to $6.50 a week, and, you know, what, what it would equate to, if, if my numbers are right.
And it's, you know, I think that's a fair point to say that there's 2.5 mill, if the town does back out all the numbers that were pulled out as an assumption of this budget appropriately, it would be a net increase of 1.13 to the taxpayers.
Correct.
Which is pretty reasonable, considering the things that you're adding for the capital improvements, as well as the employees that would need to be hired for fire protection services. With that in mind, and I don't know if there's any more discussion, but I'll make a motion to approve that budget that we reviewed on the 11th with those amendments, for 957, 327, or 957,000, 327.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, and a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Bill Lowe's. All in favor?
Right.
Motion carried. I mean, I'm going to backtrack a little. Rich, thank you for attending. Oh, I'm sorry.
Over. I was trying to figure out what the assumptions were that was being backed out of the budget. Treasure and I were having that conversation today. So I want to make sure we're on the same page, but I'm not sure we are.
Okay. I, I got it written down here, a budget of 480.
So hold, hold on. Can we, can we look up after results, show you my actual budget?
Sure. Yeah.
You're all set?
Yeah, I just, the, the comment was made twice, that if the town does what the town is supposed to do, and I don't believe that we are on the same page with that yet, so I wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah, that's really not.
We haven't decided anything.
That's really not for our commission to put forward anyway.
Didn't you just compare on that? The, the comment, and I'll make the comment, which is, if nothing was to change in the town's budget, and everything that was put into this budget was removed from the town's budget, then that increase would be 1.13. However, it's a dynamic situation, because the town's budget has other line items that will increase, so it's very difficult to say exactly what that assumption would be to the taxpayers. So I think it's just, it's based on previous year's budget to this year's budget, with no change to the town budget, that's what it would be.
Yeah, I, we still need to figure out what line specifically we're talking about.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Rich Austin, Fire Marshal, East Windsor, Broadbrook Fire Department area. There's camera, there are probably people up, too. Rich, can you go and come sit here?
I, no, I have nothing to do with it. I had, I had planned to have papers to hand out to everybody. I was getting here 45 minutes earlier, we had a chimney fire or something. I don't have anything that I can hand out, I'd like to still do that. So is there some way I can make copies? I didn't want to run through my computer, because that would be ridiculous. I mean, my printer, I mean.
I'm just going to mute for a minute, so don't talk business.
We're going to go for that, we're just moving the agenda, so we're going back to the regular, regular agenda.
Okay.
We're really done with the fire's presentation. Questions and comments from the Commission members regarding the budget. I think we should just if we have any.
Yeah, Jerry, you can mute, run recess.
Resess, okay.
While the Fire Marshal's passing out is.
Jason, just for clarification, when we figure the mill rate, does it go around nearest ten? So if we have two point four three, is it actually two point, you have to either go four or five?
It goes to hundreds.
Okay, so two spots.
Four point seven.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm always supposed to work nineteen hours a day. How about warehouse? So much harder here.
Okay, let's get this.
Mileage form?
Yeah.
And under here is.
Pretty much good. I'm sorry about this.
That's okay. Up until you have a fire, we're not expecting. Thank you. Which one? Yeah, up here.
Can I be seen back there?
No. You can sit at the head table, maybe?
Right here, she's right there.
Yeah.
Right there.
Right here.
Behind you, Rich. Perfect.
Okay. Any questions first? Satisfied with your twenty-five thousand dollars right next year? No, that's all right. All right, so there's some comparisons here, and what I'm trying to do is compare what I do now, and what's left to do here in town. Probably don't have all the form money, 'cause we're probably handing them out. And I have to comment, but I, 'cause I don't remember. This is a list of the occupancies in, in rather, to have to be inspected as I see them.
Oh, is that every year, Rich, or?
No, no, actually, this was extended out, it does have to extend out of my database, but it, uh, some of them are, like any, any of the restaurants, which are the assemblies you see here, are every year. Schools are every year, most stores are every year, yeah, the gas stations are every year. Car replaces, uh, car repairs and, and places like that would be every three or four years, up to, it's up to me. And that's basically it. Some store, places would be every four years. It's not, it's not, but these, if you look here, these were not inspected recently. And then, like this was inspected in nineteen, and it was, again, it's supposed to have been inspected in twenty, eleven, eleven, ten, twenty, easy living, it never got inspected. Just hasn't been done yet. So all the ones that are still twenties are past due. Anything that's like one, one, one twenty-one, that's due this year. So all these ones that are twenty-ones, all the way down to where it starts, twenty-two, so that many are due this year, they have to be done this year. And the rest of it are just forms, uh, printed out of firehouse software. This particular one you see here is printed out of firehouse software. And it's difficult to read. This is a copy of that form printed from the same machine, but re, reformat, reformat the report, so it looks cleaner and it means more. And if you start charging fees for things, there's a place for, for that to be printed out, and it totals it out right there. This is the mileage form that I print out, or I have to do every month for the town of East Windsor. It's, uh, it's very cumbersome, not, not picking on them, but I don't believe that it should have to be done that way. Here's, when I hand my reports in, I hand this one in. They're not saying that we're doing it right. I hand this one in, and this one in, every month, real clean and neat. This one normally would have a miles thing here, okay? I took that off because I don't, I don't give my, I don't report my miles to the other side of town. Okay, but I, on this side of town, I could put the miles, so they should just be able to say, and I, you go to the same places all the time. If I leave from X, they go to Y, it's three miles. I should just be able to put three miles. There's absolutely no need to write the actual mileage down, I don't think. That's my opinion. I'll play that, but. But these are, these are very neat, very easy to understand, again, to explain what day it was, what I did, across this line, and how many hours to do it.
Right.
Pretty simple.
And then the corresponding miles.
Correct. And that's about it. You have, uh, I don't know, maybe sixty inspections or occupancies on this side of town? Okay, thank you, after maybe sixty. And we have, uh, close to five hundred on the other side. Whoa, so it's a big, big difference in the way it's, you know, what has to be done.
Those are the ones you only know about, correct? I mean, there could be something out there, or something might pop up, new construction.
There are, there are occupancies in Warehouse Point that I don't know about yet. There are two or three that are listed here in town that I, I can't find them. So I, I was gonna talk to you guys about, are they there? And I've just not seen it. There's a couple places I've been trying to get into, and having to elevate contact with the people that own the buildings, that always happens, so. It, it's, it's a time-consuming process. Once you get it all done, and you have all the numbers, I, I don't have numbers, contact numbers for businesses and things that I need, and it'll come with time. I'm not at all concerned that it won't happen.
So if I just did some rough math, twenty-five thousand dollars will be out of the budget. And assuming that you did fifty inspections a year, that's five hundred dollars per inspection, not including mileage, not including office work, not including anything else. I mean, is, I guess this is all kind of new precedent, how we're doing this, right? You guys, you guys all agree, I mean, we have some.
That's why I tried to give you as much.
Yeah, I'm just, if, if we know how many properties we have, we know how many inspections we have to get accomplished. What other work, maybe, and, and for the people at home, and for the commissioners that don't know, what other work does the fire marshal do that would be helpful?
I'm, I'm very, very, very busy on the other side of town. I spend most of my day answering the phone or dealing with a problem that has nothing to do with inspection. The other part of my job is, I have to do permits. All the permits come through me. I have to go, I have to. We actually build on the other side for a permit, but I have to go through the plan, I have to go through the site where the, where the place is being built. And like, uh, just for instance, uh, Calamar, Watermill Landing, whatever you guys want to call it, at this point, we, we charge them forty-nine thousand dollars as a permit fee. Seems like a lot of money, but I probably already have been there thirty times.
So Rich has it rates to this side of town, and I, I wanna ask you just, right, so, so permitting, inspections, and there's also education when it comes to schools and other things like that. What other responsibilities are incumbent upon?
Burn official.
Yeah, I, I, I sort of have a point to this here. These are mileages to go just to these two, these things on your sheet. You know, burn, you have to go and inspect the pile where the burn, and reject it or accept it, let them do it or don't let them do it. Fill it a form, so that it can be sent into the state. It seems like nothing, but it could, it could take you an hour and a half just to do that.
Is that investigation, Rich?
No, that's nothing to do with investigations.
Are you involved with that?
Oh, yeah. By law, I have to be.
So you said that you're, you know, nineteen hours on that side of town, nineteen hours on this side of town. And, uh, how do you do five hundred over there and whatever it is here, and you go?
Well, I have help over there.
Oh, you have a staff?
I have, uh, four people working for me over there.
Okay, and the justification you hear right now, is that out of our budget or the town budget? Jason, sorry, the justification that Rich has given us right now, all the costs, is that out of the town budget or out of the budget that we have?
He's giving you a couple of things. So when he's talking about the inspection reports and, and like the Calamar, for example, that's in the, the Warehouse Point District's capacity. Those are, for example. His, his reporting is all, you know, these are the things that he turns and makes, uh, this is the, you know, the inspections for the Broadbrook side of town. Got a separate list that I think he shared with me at a point in time, uh, with the Warehouse Point. I, I've actually seen the full spread out sheet, it is several times wider than this. It's a, you know, I think he does a very thorough job.
But doesn't take into account, if I don't, if you don't mind me, uh, pointing it up, is all the after-hours. We go to, uh, call for a CO detector, or on a fire, any kind of fire, he's gotta be notified. Whether or not he wants to come out, depending on how severe it is, you know, house fires, those are, they can range anywhere between a couple hours to, depending on how big the building was, and, and severity of it.
Three or days technically, yeah.
Or longer, I mean, so it's really hard to really say how long are you gonna spend doing the job, because it could be busy one year, and not busy the next, or.
You know, with the, the, I guess, the reason I was asking the question is, there are some constants, right? So the constant things that have to be done are, by law, you're supposed to do certain inspections of establishments, properties, those things. And then we build the budget based on an understanding that there's going to be some variables that are unknown, and we put room in there to do those things. I guess where I'm going is, it would make sense to me to come up with a rate that says, okay, if you're going to do an inspection, you gotta leave your place of residence, you gotta come to this side of town, you do the inspection, go back home. I frankly, I don't know, maybe I'm a little bit modern on this, I don't need to see a mileage report for that stuff. If it's twenty-five thousand dollars, but fifty properties, and it's five hundred dollars a property, and you're doing ten in the month of whatever, you've burned through this much of your budget. I mean, the, the incumbent rate is included on how long it takes you to get over there and back. I mean, and again, maybe if we could get a better understanding of how that twenty-five, the hundred, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars gets broken down, how much we're gonna leave for the variable cost, we can alleviate the requirement to fill out unnecessary forms. And what you do is you just say, okay, I know I have a fixed cost, and that's to do all these things within the year.
Well, no, you don't have to all of here, right here.
Forget all these, I'm not saying all these.
What means whatever ones I have.
Whatever the numbers that have to get done in every year, we know that, right?
You can do it unvouchered, reefer.
That's. Yeah.
That's not unvouchored.
I just wanna make it simple, but also get the facts that says, so for me, what I'd like to see is a, a report that would be helpful, rather than all this, would just be like, look, the work I have to do is related to inspections. I have this much work to do in a year, so when we start off the fiscal year, it's gonna be, I've done zero out of that, however many I have to do, and then as, as we go through the year, we'll be able to see the progress that's accumulated.
That's what that, this there is for.
Right, but I, I guess maybe we don't, this is the, the, the individual things, I would like to say, hey, I got sixty to do of this type, I've done this many of them along with time. And then all the other stuff, that's, like, I've done this many permits, I've done this many fire investigations, this many things. I think a single-page report like that would be quite helpful in terms of condensing the information.
Well, this report.
What do you give the district?
I give them what, what looks like that, and again, I'm all this stuff. I give them this, and I give them this.
Your time sheet.
This tells them what I did, and this tells them what I did from the firehouse software. The database, but the firehouse software program is terrible. It won't print that.
Oh, correct.
Okay, that's my own database that I, that I made, that knows that.
Yeah.
Investigation, inspection, it's ridiculous. I could tell you what of each kind of property you have, I would have to do.
Yeah, like data sort, filter, whatever, and, yeah. Then how many inspections have to get done this year?
It's not the inspections that, at least on the other side of town, it's not the inspections that really are gonna make it difficult over here to pin it down, 'cause there aren't that many. I mean, I didn't count how many are in the twenties, one, twenty-one there, but there's not that many. It's the things you're not expecting to come up. It's two days of a house fire, it's a plan review that you have to spite with. You know, it's, it's all these little things that are gonna eat up. And you can't count, you can't, you can't count that. You have to count it, but you can't figure it out.
So the Warehouse Point District charges a permitting fee for the fire marshal. And do we have it within our power to look at doing something like that on this side of town? Is it responsible for us?
The selectmen do, and I have an ordinance drafted, but I put it on pause when your enabling ordinance passed. It drafted it in my, on my computer somewhere. Yeah, I, I have a copy of it. And, and full disclosure, I crypt it from Warehouse Point, and it just changed the relevant details so that it would be applicable on the side.
Well, this report that you give out, that you give the fire district, the time sheet, tells you exactly what you did.
Exactly.
Love that word.
That's why, that's why I printed it out, did you see it?
So possibly you could just separate out the buildings.
But I could separate it out. I don't, I don't see the need to do the separation of types of inspections every month. But I don't have, I don't have a problem doing it every few months, to say, okay, this is what needs to be done. I mean, this list, this, this list for twenty-one has been a little way for existence, hopeful, barring any other issues about it. And, oh, by the way, quite a few of the places that I have to inspect on this side of town are not that simple. They haven't been inspected properly sometimes, sometimes nobody even knew they were there, or they're very difficult to get along with, and they don't wanna fix the things that they need to fix. So you have to keep going back. So it's not just one time. Sometimes nobody even knew they were there, or they're very difficult to get along with, and they don't wanna fix the things that they need to fix, so you have to keep going back, so it's not just one time I go to
So what happened?
Whatever address.
That's a, kind of a segue, but what happened if some property doesn't conform to the fire marshal's, you know, are they cited?
Ultimately, we take them to court. There's a couple on the other side.
Which would also take some time.
Oh, yeah. Uh, I started at the same, we had a fire at, uh, at fifty-four Wells Road, the airport, you were there.
Yeah.
I worked a long time at that scene. I did a whole report with credit of the time involved, I went back to inspect it again, twice more, I spent four hours in court, and it's still not gone away. I've done about eight different FOIs from insurance companies wanting information from it, it just, it's not as simple as you think, it's not just, okay, boom, boom, boom.
So we're talking, maybe, maybe you should couch that, I don't think anybody assumes it's simple, I, I just want that. I just, I just think I wanna make it, I, I'm trying to make it so that you can do less works, you don't have to fill out more forms, I want it to be very easy that you can come and report.
Well, that's why I objected, and, and, and I, and I, I apologize to the town if it sounds like I don't, I, I, I think this is a bad form, but it doesn't work, and I, you and I talked about this, this form, I know, this form does not work for this guy.
At all, but that's the question I kinda go back to, is he, Rich is working for the town of East Windsor, but we just put in the budget, money for the fire department incorporated, so who's he working for?
July first, July first, us.
So on July first, he works for the Brubert Fire Department Incorporated, reports on fire commissions.
For the ordinance, yeah.
Okay, alright, got it, that makes sense.
I was aware of that, I'm aware of that subject.
So once the, once that comes out, then your time card can look different based on what the corporation requires versus what the town requires.
Well, that's why I was bringing it up to the commission, because you guys are also gonna be charged, right? Trying to seed that into the deal at all.
Any, uh, questions for, um,
No, we, we, as the chiefs, we sat down with him, and we talked about his budget and what was proposed, and we were happy with, with forward that to you guys, that was, that's what's in the proposed budget, so.
Why don't we, as, as a commission members, why don't we take these papers that he gave us tonight, and review them, and then we can come up with our own that we want him to use on this side effective July first.
Well, and, and that's wonderful, but, uh, we're changing software on the other side of the river.
We are too.
They are gonna change also to a different software made by the company that took over.
Right, we're aware of that, yeah.
This company. They're gonna have a form, I'm sure, to print something like this, or.
One of you is doing it all for you.
So, I'm hoping that it, that it'll be workable, that I can at least rearrange it, most of these things can be reprogrammed to print the way you want it to do, and hopefully we can do that, and it will look like you guys want it, and we'll work together to make it look like that, that's.
Pretty fine. Okay, any other questions? Rich, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Okay, are there any other questions, comments from the commission members? About anything we talked about here tonight? I, I have one concern, we're, we're supposed to be with the town on February sixteenth, right?
Correct.
Were we meeting with the board of selectmen, or?
Yes.
And then, from there, does this process go to the finance board?
Yep.
Do, are we able to attend that, or required to attend that? Do we have dates on that yet, or no?
On the board by ads, I don't think they've set, I don't, they've set their workshop dates, but they haven't assigned, um, who's who, you know, who's going on what date yet. There is, doesn't start until sometime after March twenty-third or something.
What was the end, February what, isn't that?
Sixteen, the sixth, third, or seventh? Seventh, seventh.
Okay, then we have, um, our meeting, our next meeting of the commission is the twenty-second of February, right? Um, I don't know if we have a need to meet before, or we're just, uh, going to attend the, uh, on the sixteenth?
I thought we, I thought we talked about that in the budget workshop, that it was you and I are presenting to the selectmen the budget. Okay, and you have the sixteen.
I don't know about the people invited, right?
Oh, everybody's invited, right?
Oh, that's right. So we'll have to see your, your, uh, new budget based on your decisions on tonight's meeting.
Yep, I'll get that done tomorrow, and I'll email it out to you. Yeah, well, I'll get ahold, make sure that the numbers on the town side are kosher. Um, but as far as our numbers, that's, that's solid, so. Yep, yep.
We'll give it to you guys exactly what we're gonna give to the town, because the town has a whole set of different numbers, we have to file it on there.
Right, so I gotta, we gotta get those from the town treasurer. She already got my mail, she just sent a email to me.
Anyone have any other questions or comments? We, we put the executive session in here, I wasn't sure if there was something that had to come up.
I got two things.
You have two things?
Yeah, personal.
Alright, do we have to go into executive session for it?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have to adjourn the regular meeting?
Motion to an executive session pursuant to Connecticut general statute.
One dash two hundred.
One dash two hundred.
And to include anybody you wanna include in that.
Oh, yes.
To include the first selectman and the chief officers present from the Brubert Fire Department Incorporated.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it up.
Seconded by Bill Lowe's. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Please, what about an executive session?
And I don't have any other business, anyone else have anything they wanna bring up?
I just had the, uh.
Add to this month's agenda?
For, for, uh, next month, maybe, uh, I have to get it to you guys, maybe we can print it out tonight, Jerry, the article that, that we were talking about from, uh, the Chiefs Association converting from a strip volunteer department to a combination department, and talks about some really good things. And I think it's important for all the commissioners, and Jerry gave it to us, to look at the Chiefs as well. I think the takeaway from that should be that, as we're establishing this commission, and this is not my recommendation, this is an association of chiefs across America that made this recommendation, looking, looking sort of strategically at the, at the existence of the fire department and the goodwill for the town, we should come up with a consistent set of measurements, the dashboard, if you will, by which we measure the effectiveness with which Brubert Fire Department Incorporated is providing fire protection services to the constituency that we represent, and then if there's issues, then we'll know where resource gaps and shortfalls could come from. So, in that, in that thing, it talks about some really good things, you know, number of calls by type, time to report to each call by type, number of personnel, number of personnel attending by type, and then total number of personnel, turnover, loss, other things like that. And that'll help inform us, and I think it's important to establish a baseline, so that ten years down the road, you know, we're envisioning problems before they get there, but also they have something to go on in terms of periodic reports that come from the fire department, that'll be helpful. So I, I gotta get it to you guys, but I sent it to the other commissioners.
I have it, I, those on email, you sent everyone on email?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll put mine, I'll put it out and bring it down, drop it on the box. I'll, I'll think of that tomorrow, and then what else have?
Oh, I sent it. Said Hop Hop a woodworker, point you?
No, no, no.
I think without emails, I think everything should be printed out.
Yeah, I just, I can't process it.
I tried to drop it off in your box.
I just can't process it, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll think of that tomorrow, so that's no big deal, and, uh, I'll send it out to you, Gil, if you didn't get it.
Yeah, if you want, uh, iCloud?
Uh, yes, when I, yeah, I'll send that out, I, I have it still on my computer. Oh, we have it here. Alright? Alright, anything else to come up? Want to take a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
A motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourn eight fifteen.